I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order on March 26, 2024, and ask our city clerk to please call roll.
Commissioner Guess.
Present.
Commissioner Henderson.
Present.
Commissioner Smith. Commissioner Wilson.
Present.
Mayor Bray.
Present. I'll ask Commissioner Henderson to do the invocation, and we'll remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
God of heaven, we thank you so much for this beautiful day that you've given us, and we're grateful, God, for the blessings that we right now enjoy. Father, we thank you for the privilege that you've given all of us to serve this community. And we pray, God, that the decisions that we make will be decisions that will make you smile. We pray your richest blessings upon all of us, and we pray your richest blessings upon the citizens of Paducah. God, you be present, and may be aware of your presence, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Longer days outside, we may get out of here before nightfall. Okay, city manager, are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
None this evening, mayor.
Okay, I have two proclamations tonight I'd like to read, and we have some representatives from Lotus here. Welcome. Thanks, everybody, for coming. You guys do such great work in the community, so we're always glad to collaborate with you in doing these proclamations. So if you want to come up, I'll read them. So the first one is to acknowledge Child Abuse Prevention Month, and it reads, whereas National Child Abuse Prevention Month is recognized throughout the United States during the month of April, and whereas child abuse and neglect are far-reaching problems in every segment of society and have long-term effects on the victims and their families, and whereas prevention remains the best defense for our children and their families, and whereas effective child abuse prevention succeeds with partnerships created between families, assault centers, healthcare providers, law enforcement agencies, and faith-based organizations, and whereas we acknowledge the crucial connection between a happy childhood and a hopeful future, and recommit to working together to ensure all families have the resources and support they need to reach their full potential, and whereas we thank the workers, organizations, and other individuals that work year-round to promote child and family safety and well-being through a variety of prevention activities and programs. Now therefore, I, George Bray, Mayor Paducah, Kentucky, do hereby proclaim April 2024 Child Abuse Prevention Month. Let me read the other one, do them together, or do them separately?
If you do them together.
Okay. Yeah, sure. Yeah. I've got the time. So the second proclamation is to recognize sexual assault awareness, which is a very serious issue. And so the proclamation reads, whereas Sexual Assault Awareness and Prevention Month is recognized throughout the United States as well as in the Commonwealth of Kentucky during the month of April, and whereas sexual harassment, abuse, and assault are widespread problems affecting every segment of our communities, and finding solutions requires input and action from everyone, and whereas sexual violence can happen anywhere and can have long-term psychological, emotional, and physical effects that have lasting consequences for survivors and the greater community, and whereas we acknowledge that we must work together as a community to increase awareness about sexual violence and contribute to creating a visible network of support for survivors, and whereas each of us has the opportunity and shared responsibility to make everyday choices reflected in our attitudes, words, and behaviors which promote safety and communicate intolerance for violence. Now therefore, I, George P. Bray, Mayor of City of Paducah, proclaim April 2024 Sexual Assault Awareness and Prevention Month. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mayor Bray.
Can we get, let me get in the middle. How about that? Got it? All right. I guess I'm a camera hole, and I'm sorry. Here's these two.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all for coming. Okay, next, we have an update from our Joint Sewer Agency, which we just had an update, didn't we? Is this update number two?
Maybe you should use that term. That was just too good.
She beat you to it, didn't she, John? It's really nice to have you here, John.
Can't run from those, can't. Actually, mayor, I think Darren had asked me to do like a financial review for the sewer agency. I think Paducah Power dropped their audit off a couple of months ago. And so I think Darren, is Paducah Water going to stop by too at some point?
Yep.
So I, you know, we are, we do a single audit every year, pretty much because we get federal money, and I do send that to Darren and to Steve. And so I just have a few slides to talk a little bit more basic about us financially and kind of what we are.
Well, just as a little, if I could just interrupt for a second. I mean, just as a little background, you know, we get these financial statements dropped off from Paducah Water, you know, Paducah Power, Joint Sewer Agency, you know, and we get these thick audits and everything, and you know, the question on my mind is, you know, really, what kind of year did you have? I mean, what, you know, what, you know, how were things? How were expenses? You know, what, you know, how are revenues compared to expenses? You know, what are your growth trends or lack thereof, you know?
Growth trends.
So there's lots of terms you could...
We do, we do look at all that, actually, believe it or not. So is this my driver? Okay, that's what I thought. See where I'm at. So just a couple of basic things here. I can't do anything anymore without doing that. We are formed, we were formed in 99. If you look at Paducah Power and Paducah Water, they're super old, 100 years. I think Paducah Power is from the 60s, maybe. I think so. So we're formed in 99, KRS 76231. That's a, that's a law that was pretty much enacted when they made Louisville MSD, and there's only about three or four of us, I would say, in the state that are formed this way. We're a little different than Paducah Water and Paducah Power in that our board is comprised of appointees from both the city and the county, whereas Paducah Water and Paducah Power, I think you guys appoint their entire board, city appoints half, county appoints half, and I've got a joint appointment. That's what you see there, Justin. The chairman is a joint appointment, and then we've got Commissioner Guess on as our city rep, and then Eddie Jones is our rep from physical court. A little bit different than Paducah Water and Paducah Power, too, in the fact that when they want to buy property or surplus property, they need to come to you guys to get permission for that, and when they bond money, they need to come to the city to get permission to do that, or you have some role in that approval process. Sewer agency is different. We can buy and surplus property at board level, and we can also borrow or bond money at board level. So it's a little bit different than Paducah Power and Paducah Water. Just wanted to kind of mention that. I think I've seen Jason come here before, where he had to surplus a piece of property and needed to get you guys to approve it. We can do that at board level. Anyway, we borrow probably more money more often than some of those other folks. Okay, I keep going here. So I just thought I would talk a little bit about revenue and then some of our expenses. So on our revenue, we kind of break it into two types. You know, you have your operating revenue and your non-operating revenue. Both of those numbers are really good for us. Operating revenue is what we charge as rates, and it also has waste toller fees and industrial user fees. Most of our industrial user fees are surcharges for high-strength wastewater. So if you have like a Darling place that manufactures dog food, their effluent can't get reduced down to a level that the feds and the state say that you can to discharge to us. And so by law, we either have to issue them a notice of violation, or we give them a surcharge, and most of these folks want you to give them a surcharge because they don't want to get a bunch of notice of violations. And so the surcharge business is primarily with Darling, but we have a few other folks that are industrial users that have to submit reports and things that could get a surcharge assigned to them. Waste toller fees have been really good for us. If you have a place like Honeywell or a place like Shawnee, and their plant goes down, we're the best show in town for domestic wastewater to be placed here while they work on their plant, and it seems like those guys' plants keep breaking all the time, which, of course, breaks my heart, but we have to charge them to take their stuff. So we make a little money doing that, which is good. Non-operating revenue is our investment revenue, sale of assets and connection permit fees. The bulk of that non-operating revenue is revenue we made from investments. And so with the interest rates that have got higher, you know, most of our investments right now, and I'm sure you guys, too, with CDs and whatnot, are between 4% and 5%. We're signing some now for 5%, and so you can make some money if you have a little bit of money. So that's good for us. So that's our revenue. Really, when we look at certain things, you can't really take into account your waste toller fees, your industrial users, you can't really take into account your investment revenue, because that could all fluctuate. So really, when you look at your debt and things like that, and how you're going to handle your debt, you really need to look at your user rates. And if you want to look at that number up here, user rates are probably right at $10 million. Did it do it, or did I screw it up? I didn't touch anything, I don't think.
See the mouse?
That's not me. Now I've got something about how do I get into it? It says it's locked.
It timed out?
I think it timed out. There you go. It's right there.
It's on the screen.
I'll just do from the beginning. Does that come up? There it is. It's here. It's not here. There we go. So for our rates, currently, our rate, 661 per thousand. It's the 3,000 gallon minimum. Everybody is going to bill you differently. Paducah Water could bill by declining rate block. We're pretty much a straight rate, and most of your sewer places have not, they've gotten rid of your minimum usage, they charge you some sort of user fee, and then however much you use, you pay. We still don't do it that. We haven't changed. Our last actual rate ordinance was approved back in January of 16. I did that when we had a lot of board turnover, and I call that rate like a ladder. I had a rate change in March of, March of 16, and then we did one in July of 17. And the reason why we did that is we had some debt that was coming on, and we wanted to kind of schedule that based on how the debt came in. That rate ordinance allowed the Board of Directors for the sewer agency to adjust our rates annually by the CPIU. You've seen me come up here on an annual basis and do what we call House Bill 1 testimony about a rate change related to a Consumer Price Index. We base that on the April Consumer Price. We just codified it that way by board. So we'll be looking again at the April CPIU and see how that looks. Roughly, we have about 19,350 accounts. It's going to change, and we bill roughly 4 million gallons per day. A lot of people will say, well, this water didn't go into the sewer, and all of this other stuff. We get that all the time. We actually treat more than 4 million gallons a day, believe it or not. Even on a dry period and a super drought, we'll still treat way more than 4 million. You still have groundwater that leaks in through people's service lines and everywhere, and we still have to treat that. This is an interesting thing. So 50% of our accounts are minimum users, so that means that 50% of the folks that we deal with use less than 3 gallons, 3,000 gallons per month. You can see that's right about a $20 bill. That's gone up significantly over the years. So even though you might be raising your rate, you have declining water usage. So you're fighting, if you talk about your growth projections and all that. A lot of folks will tell you that, I think, 2% a year is what you're losing on water usage. I don't know if that's us or not, but I do know that if you do a rate change, you may not fully see that whole rate change that next year, because you're going to have a little bit potentially of your, of your water usage going down.
How would you be losing 2% a year?
Because people are putting more water-efficient fixtures in their home, stuff like that.
Okay.
And then I have that very, the very last bullet there is, average resident uses around 4,500 gallons. That's just a note. A lot of the ways you look at water usage in, how you compare your bill to other people is to look at 5,000 gallons of usage in a month, and we did some work a few years ago in a total residential neighborhood where I could actually calc that, and it looked like here in Paducah, we're out, really out kind of McCracken County, it was right around 4,500 gallons a month. So $30 sewer bill for most of your residents on average. I'm not going to put anything on this computer again for fear of shutting it off. So let me flip it here like this. So now, this is how we spend our money. You're going to see that labor costs are about half of what we spend, or operating costs are 5 million. That's based on a revenue of 10. I like that. This is the first year I've been over 5 on our operating cost. I don't like that, but it is what it is. Stuff is just costing us more money. When we budget for what we do in a year, I'll tell the board, and I told this to Commissioner Guess before, our budget is an estimate of what we're going to spend. We're not going to spend anything that we don't have to, but we make sure everything works, and sometimes you have to spend a little bit more money that way to make sure everything works. But 5 million is what we are at right now. You'll see, I do want to mention something because Chris is here, and I appreciate this. We do a lot of fleet work with the city, and that's through the Fleet Department. We have that agreement with Chris, and we have some unique, large vehicles that a lot of places around here want to work on, and they do a really good job, and I'm thankful for them. I just want to give some praise to Chris, because you know how that goes. He may not get all that much from time to time. I've been in that boat myself, so I figure we'll stick together a little bit, and I'll talk about him. But what could impact our operating costs in the future is the fact that the sewer agency is going to go through, just like everybody does, transitional periods with their people. You have people retire that you need to replace. I'm going to lose 75% of my supervision within a year, and so what we're going to have to do is, and we're already working on that, is you have to staff up in order to replace the folks that you need. What we do is unique. You can't really hire supervision off the street, and then you can't have your workforce that works for you, your hourly workforce, not have some technical knowledge, you won't be able to get anything done. So over the course of the next year or so, I'm going to be hiring a couple people in anticipation of those retirements to, and we're already looking at ways there that we can have that as seamless as possible. I've been talking to the board about that, but that is the one thing that could affect our operating costs. There we go. Now, sanitary sewers are high debt. You're not going to see this with a lot of water folks, but if you go around the state or around the country, you're going to notice that sewer utilities are high-debt folks. Our debt is 34 million at the end of the FY. That corresponds to $2.4 million annual debt service payment. Now, Hopkinsville's doing a 55 or so million dollar treatment plan upgrade. Murray did a 45 million one a few years ago. Owensboro's got 60 million they need to do. This is not uncommon for places to have debt, and you have to be prepared for it. You can see some of the large debt projects that we have upcoming. We need to finish some stuff over here at the treatment plant that we plan on bidding soon. We need to work on our Woodlawn wastewater treatment plant, and then I want to do the same thing that we're doing at our treatment plant related to combined sewers in Noble Park next. All of that is short-term, from now till '27. If you municipally bond, you guys know this, you have to kind of bond earlier in the project. If you borrow from KIA, which is a really good place for us to borrow, you get your lower interest rates anywhere from 0.7 to 2.2. You can bring that debt on at the end of your project. So how this debt gets applied in our finances, it really depends on if we can rank high enough with KIA to get the terms that we want on our interest rate. I do have a project there, the, we have to do some work at a wastewater treatment plant. That will be a cash project. Our current debt coverage ratio is good. It's 2.4. Our board, ever since I've been there, stipulates a 1.3. KIA requires a 1.1, and we do have a Moody's rating because we have bonded before municipally, and that's an AA3. And they used to review that every year, all the way up to '21, and they haven't done it lately. So, but I think we're still about the same. Now, when we look at, there we go, and you're not supposed to, this is just an example. When we look at our finances and you want to talk about where we're going and when we meet with the board, on an annual basis at a minimum, we do a debt capacity analysis where we load up what we think we're going to spend and how much it's going to cost us from a debt standpoint and the impact. We try to forecast how our operating rates are going to go up, and then we'll look at potential consumer price indexes to see how we're going to stand. If we can do a CPIU adjustment on an annual basis and keep from having to do an actual rate adjustment with the city and the county, that's what we want to do. And so we do do these in-house. We do them all the time, and as our revenue changes and things like that, we have to update these from time to time. So we are constantly looking at how we're going to look going forward to make sure that we're covered. Once again, we're in good shape right now, but we've been planning for these large debt projects to come on. That's not something that is a surprise to me. All of these are through agreed orders. They're not optional, and they're according to a schedule that we have, and we load those in. And so from the moment, all the way back to '09, I remember, we've been looking at this and doing consumer price changes and trying to make sure that we keep our operating costs as low as possible so that we can afford the most debt that we have to take on, so that we can keep our rates as low as that we, low as we can. And then finally, there we go, just like everybody else, we have gotten some ARPA grants that came through KIA. So here's some of the recent grant activity that we've gotten. Most of these amounts are shared with Paducah Water, just Jason and I got together and split them out. And the plan for all of our ARPA money, because ARPA can get tied into Davis Bacon, they can get tied into American Iron and Steel, I think especially American Iron and Steel. And so those sometimes can cause your projects to get premiumed up. In other words, they're going to cost more money, even though you're getting a grant to apply it, it's going to cost you more. So what the game plan here is, is to apply these grants to things that we normally cash flow that will not have a Davis Bacon issue or an American Iron and Steel issue, so that way we can get a better value out of these grants, and then we'll use that cash to apply it on a project that may have steel components that we can import to keep the price down so that we can keep our debt down, and we can also apply some of this money. We still, we do have, and we're currently still working on the sewer line out to the airport. You can see that DRA grant there. And then the last one that's different is that PDI grant that we got with the county on the Triple RL force main extension. And that's what I got. I really don't know, I hope this was what you guys were looking for. I can answer any questions that you might have related to us, and of course, I thank you guys.
Well, I can speak for myself, so it's very helpful. It gives us an idea. I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
So the airport expansion is almost complete, right?
Airport expansion, where we're at, if you were, you build uphill, we do have a lift station in there. The very first thing that we did was bore under New 60. That was the most riskiest thing, and that went really well. We're done with the bore. We've got the lift station in the ground. We've got the sewer line built from Jackson Purchase up to the railroad. We've got the force main for the lift station built. We have built up Rickman Road. We're building now from Rickman to Fisher, and then make the turn at Fisher, and you'll head to the airport. So that's where we are.
Okay.
That project's going pretty good until, I think, the contractor hit an analog phone line today, so.
So, and that will connect the new terminal, right?
Well, how the new terminal goes, the new terminal's pretty far out there. The sewer line goes to the private package system that the airport currently has, which is over there next to the terminal. It's part of the terminal project. They have a force main, they have a little bit of gravity main coming out of the terminal, then they have a pump station that pumps to that package plant. And so once you get to that package plant, you've pretty much connected the dots all the way to the terminal.
Okay. Because I know one of the things that we were interested in is make sure that we had capacity for future expansion, you know?
Yeah, and the way the terminal was laid out, the lift station is really far away from the terminal, which allows, if you do have something they can connect on next, you got that big open area there.
Yeah.
And then if you do anything with the old terminal, that would still be able to be, you know... that would still be able to be, you know, serviced by this. And I mean, there's, there's plenty of capacity right there for, for anything.
And the other question I had was around your debt service or the length of time on your debt. Most of your debt is, uh...
20 years.
20-year debt.
Yeah. We had, we had a, uh, back in 2010, I was able to get a RD USDA grant, 80-20. And on a pretty big job, maybe it was 70-30. It was a million and a half dollars. And we did the math on that. And taking that, that loan, because you, you basically took a loan for part and you got that grant, was gonna work out better. But the debt service went out past 20 years, which I personally don't like that. I don't wanna saddle everybody with long, long-term debt. But the money worked out good. So what we did is we let that play for a while, for like 10 years or so, and then I closed that out. We used some cash and closed that debt out.
Okay. Well, that was gonna be my next question, if you ever pay off debt early. So that's...
I've paid off two early. Honestly, what you wanna do on some of these, the RD loan was, was one I felt like, minus the current interest rate environment, it was a good candidate to be paid off. But like, we just got 6.6 million that we're doing, we're closing out. And that's a .7% interest with, I'm not gonna close that out. We're gonna use our cash to make more money. So it's a game. You see what I'm saying?
Sure, of course.
To figure out what, what, what you wanna keep on the books and then what you wanna make. And so the only reason why, the main driver for the RD loan to be closed out was just, I don't like anything longer than a 20-year debt.
How much cash do you have sitting around?
So we've got cash saved up. That six or seven million dollars that we've got saved up for the, uh, the sludge building, we saved our money for that over a period of time because I knew it would not rank. And I didn't wanna add it to the debt load or bond it. You subtract that out and you subtract out reserves that we're required to have for KIA, which is another million and a half to 2 million. And then we're like, we have about 11 million after that. So we're not financially hurt. But when you look at the size of the projects that we have to do, it's really a small amount of money based on what we're playing out. A lot of times what we do with that too is when you do these bigger jobs over the course of a year or two, you, if you start drawing your KIA money out, you pay construction interest. And I don't wanna do that. And so we wait as long as we possibly can to make a draw so that won't trigger construction interest.
I'd say you're very financially healthy. And so I appreciate, anybody else have any questions? I mean, David, I know you sit on the board.
I'm on it. Very, very well-run.
Organization?
Yes. Did a good job.
We all good? Thanks for coming and thanks for...
Some days are good and some days are bad. So you know how it goes. Appreciate y'all. Thank you, John.
Thank you. Appreciate you, John.
Okay, I think we'll move on to the consent agenda. And items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the Board of Commissioners and will be enacted by one motion and one vote. Eventually, I think I may memorize this. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a board member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. City Clerk will read the items recommended for approval unless a commissioner would like an item removed for separate discussion. So I think the City Clerk can go ahead and read the items recommended for approval.
Approve minutes for the March 12, 2024 Board of Commissioners meeting. Receive and file documents. Appointment of Joseph Ben Mary to the Paducah Area Transit System Authority Board to replace Zachary Hoosman, who's resigned. Said term shall expire June 30, 2024. Appointment of Robert Bryant to the Paducah Golf Commission to replace John Gill, whose term has expired. Said term shall expire March 26, 2028. Personnel actions. A municipal order approving the execution of a grant application for a 911 services board grant in the amount of $110,725 to be used by the Paducah Police Department for data capture recording hardware and software that will work in conjunction with a new radio system upgrade. A municipal order authorizing the mayor to execute a grant application and all documents necessary for a first responders grant through the Marathon Petroleum Foundation in an amount of $5,000 to be used by the Paducah Fire Department for the purchase of water removal equipment, ice suits, and other vital water rescue gear and authorizing and accepting all grant funds awarded. A municipal order authorizing the mayor to execute a Kentucky Pride Fund composting grant application in the amount of $602,071 and all documents necessary through the Department of Environmental Protection, Division of Waste Management for funding to purchase a horizontal grinder for the city's composting facility. A municipal order authorizing an application for an acceptance of a 2024 through 2025 Kentucky Household Hazardous Waste Grant through the Kentucky Division of Waste Management in the amount of $44,995 to assist in funding the city-county annual spring cleanup day and authorizing the mayor to execute all grant documents and an interlocal agreement with McCracken County for said grant. A municipal order approving a fleet maintenance motorized equipment and emergency apparatus service agreement with the city of Bardwell to provide fleet maintenance services at hourly rates and authorizing the execution of all documents related to same. A municipal order authorizing the application for a crumb rubber tire derived products grant through the Energy and Environment Cabinet in the amount of $36,000 for a poured-in-place rubber surfacing for the fitness area of the Pat and Jim Brockenbauer Rotary Health Park and authorizing the mayor to execute all documents related to same.
So moved.
Call roll.
Commissioner Gess?
Aye.
Commissioner Henderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Bray?
Aye.
We have two municipal orders. The first one is a small contract modification. I'll ask the City Clerk to please read it.
A proposed motion of the Board of Commissioners to adopt a municipal order entitled, "A Municipal Order Adopting Contract Modification Number Two" to the construction contract with Dredge America Incorporated for a decrease in scope and a price reduction in the amount of $4,300, uh, $4,238.80 and authorizing the mayor to execute the change order.
So moved. Second.
Aye. Melanie.
Good evening, Mayor, City Commissioners, City Manager, and City Clerk. This is just a closeout for our 2024 dredging project. If you will remember, we received FEMA funding to do hopefully three years of dredging around our transient dock. The flooding that we had in 18, 19, and 20 caused a lot of siltation around the dock. So we have spent two years. We can dredge 60,000 cubic yards a year. So our contractor works very hard to keep it within our permitted amount. We don't wanna go over that. And within our permitted area. So this is just cleaning up the contract with them.
And they, they do that work at a certain time of the year or all year?
No, we, it's once a year. And we did it in basically February, the month of February. It's a 21-day project. We try to keep it to as short a bound as time because it requires the closure of the transient dock.
Okay. No further questions? I mean, any, any negative adjustment on the contract's a good thing. So, so. Call roll.
Commissioner Gess?
Aye.
Commissioner Henderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Bray?
Aye.
And the second municipal order is, and I, this, this was on the consent agenda. And I asked for it to be pulled off just because I know that there's people in the community that are very interested in what's gonna happen with the tennis courts now that we've got the pickleball courts in. And so I'll let the, I'll let the City Clerk read.
A proposed motion of the Board of Commissioners to adopt a municipal order entitled, "A Municipal Order Authorizing and Directing the City Manager to Initiate a Request for Proposal for Tennis Court Resurfacing."
So moved.
Second.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, City Clerk. We are basically seeking your approval to put out an RFP for tennis court resurfacing. The last time the courts were resurfaced was in 2017 when they were reconstructed. And resurfacing lasts about five to 10 years. And we're on year seven. So it's a perfect time to do it. Now that the pickleball courts are constructed and open, we can go back to just having junior tennis and tennis court, tennis at our facility. So in 2021, we striped shadow lines for pickleball on our junior courts. So that will all go away and it'll be a tennis facility moving forward once this project is complete.
How, when are you planning to do it?
It, it will really depend on the timeline of the vendors. We've been told the earliest we can get to, that they can get to us at this point is July. So I'm anticipating it'll be a late summer project.
How long would they be closed?
Just a couple of days. It doesn't take very long. Yep. And we'll, of course, we have...
Can't miss Martinez's guy.
Yeah. And we have, you know, we have the contract with St. Mary. And so we'll have to work through all of that with, with St. Mary as well as the Paducah Tennis Association.
Okay, great.
Yeah, well, thanks, thanks for being here. And I just wanted us to all be aware because, you know, we built the pickleball courts and there's still tennis players out there. I was in the park this weekend. So there was, you know, both courts were full. And, and, and one of the points that people made, you know, is that it's important to have a junior tennis court. And, and I agree with that. So we, we did what we have, had to do in the short run, but now we're moving back. So.
Right. It was never meant to be permanent. So this is just us going back and fixing it.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Please, call roll.
Commissioner Gess?
Aye.
Commissioner Henderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Bray?
Aye.
We have one ordinance to introduce, the closure of an alley. And I'll ask the City Clerk to please read it.
A proposed motion that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Providing for the Closure of 2,105 Square Feet of a 13.25-foot Alley West of South 16th Street Between Kentucky Avenue and Washington Street and Authorizing the Mayor to Execute All Documents Relating to Same." This ordinance is summarized as follows. "The city of Paducah does hereby authorize the closure of 2,105 square feet of a 13.25-foot alley west of South 16th Street between Kentucky Avenue and Washington Street and authorizes, empowers, and directs the mayor to execute a quitclaim deed from the city of Paducah to the property owner in rebutting the public way to be closed and all other necessary documents to effectuate the closure."
So moved. Second.
Melanie.
Lindsay's gonna pull up the, um, plaque. Okay. So this is the corner of Kentucky 16th Street and Washington Street. So you got Washington here, 16th. The railroad is over here on this side. So if you're trying to kind of get an idea of where we're at. I think this used to be a car lot at one time. Okay. This is the new Paducah-McCracken County Senior Citizens Center plot. So they have purchased all the lots that you see. We've gotta close the alley so that they can then come in and do a waiver of subdivision. So this is where the new Senior Citizens Center is gonna be.
Yeah, we're gonna be hearing a lot more about the Senior Citizens Center. You know, they're, they're in the process of design right now. And so gotta, gotta look at some of the stuff they're working. They're not, they haven't completed it yet. But we're all gonna be hearing a lot more about that. And of course, eventually, you know, Amy and her staff are, you all moved out of the, they're out of the Cherry Civic Center, is all that's left.
The administration is, we still have maintenance.
Okay.
And a few recreation people there.
Okay. So, so at some point in time, the senior center will be out of there.
Yes.
And hopefully we can co-time our maintenance being out of there at the same time. You're working on it.
Yes, we are.
Okay.
We would like to get that done as quick as possible.
Right. Okay. All right. Nothing more from me? We're good?
Thank you.
Thank you, Melanie.
Okay, City Manager, any comments?
None this evening, Mayor.
Commissioners, any comments?
None this evening, Mayor.
That's good to know.
I second that.
Okay, we do have an executive session tonight.